It is six o'clock, August thirteenth, twenty twenty five. I'd like to call this meeting of the Old Sablek zoning Board of Appeals to Order. Please rise and join me in the presence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. By way of explanation, I've been asked to fill in as chair tonight because the chair and vice chair have both recused themselves from the matter before us. For the roll call, I am Alfred Wilcox, a regular member of the zoning Board of Appeals. Also sitting, also present are Marty Lad, Andrew Morosky. I don't see Jonathan Miles.
I'm here.
Okay. And Laurie Denis. First item on the agenda is the public hearing on twenty-five, twenty-six dash two, Papalino and Kimberly Iparo, twenty in Mogi Control. That matter has been withdrawn by the applicant. Second item on the agenda for public hearings is twenty-five, twenty-six dash five C, Gino and Karen Giammoni. Requesting a variance for nineteen Sequest Road. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask who will be presenting for the applicant.
I will. Our attorney is on the issue, so.
I'm sorry?
I will. Any questions?
Okay.
Chub, do you mind just for the record, making sure that stating the alternate members are seated for this applicant?
Oh, oh, sure. I'm sorry. Seated for this are all of the members present and alternates, myself, Chair Marty Lad, Andrew Morosky, Jonathan Miles, and Laurie Denis. Okay, Mr. Giammoni, it's yours.
Okay. Can I hand these out to you now or?
Thank you. And who did read these?
I think we've handed out.
Let me see if I can cut through this. You were before us back in January. You presented us with plans. You asked for a variance. A variance was granted on the grounds that there was a reduction in nonconformities. And it is apparent from what you have submitted that in destroying the part of the house that you originally planned to destroy, you found out that conditions were worse than had been anticipated and much more was removed than originally contemplated.
Unfortunately, obviously, it wasn't our choice. We didn't plan for it. You know, it caused some blooming as a result.
I'm going to ask you to keep your voice up, if you would.
Yeah. Obviously, it was not our plan to deconstruct the home down to the foundation on one side. We did keep the most of the footprint on the right side, both the garage, just to kind of level it square it off.
Okay, and just for the record, is it correct that all of the original setbacks on the plans that were approved remain as approved?
Exactly. Nothing changed other than partially tear down.
And because you have, as I understand it, you've gone to six-inch studs instead of four-inch studs. You have not gone out, you've gone in.
Correct.
Okay, and there's been no change in the height, no change in coverage.
Zero.
All right. Is there anything else you'd like to?
If you'd like me, I could do the statement.
I think we've got it.
I do want to add, we do have a letter from Tom Makowski, everyone from the Wiki, the building inspector.
Yes.
Essentially approves what we had done, as we really had no choice. And a letter from our architect that kind of supports the foundation in a rear and also supports, you know, the two-by-six construction and the rot. And both Don and Rick and Becky are here for any questions.
Do I need to read these into the record or can they just be made part of the record?
The ones that were submitted here?
Yes. I don't want to read all of his correspondence into the record if I don't have to.
Nick?
You could accept it and admit it into the record. I mean, if it's, if the applicant is reciting the substance of the correspondence, I would just want the board to be fully informed what the substance of that correspondence is. So if there's additional items being submitted tonight, I believe, and I'm not staff or the clerk here, but should the board feel that it needs more time, I think we have more time, but I don't, to answer the question, Mr. Chairman, for tonight at least, you do not need to read these into the record.
Okay, I will just summarize the letter from Tom Papawicki, the Old Sablek building official. He concludes the first floor deck framing itself were structurally compromised. They had to be replaced or they would not have met the structural requirements of section R five oh two wood floor framing. He also recites that he received a letter from the Architect of Records stating that all of the repairs were necessary and met the requirements of the twenty-twenty-one International Residential Code. Well, we also have received a letter from Coastal Resources. Which I apparently misplaced. I got it. This recites that after beginning construction, the builders determined the first floor framing was not sufficient to support the second story addition and needed to be replaced. It concludes the variance requested to replace the first floor framing in order to support the previously approved second story addition does not appear to have any impacts to coastal resources. Okay, we have other correspondence, but we'll get to that when we open the public comment. Do you have anything?
Is there anything in this communication that adds to what Chub already summarized?
The applicant has submitted a package of material, including photographs and explication that I think just further evidence what's already been put on the record.
Correct.
Photographs of rot, dry rot, nonconforming construction.
Right. I just want to add that it was never our intent to go from two-by-four to two-by-six. We ordered all of our windows for two-by-four construction. And we have all our windows sitting at Latham, okay, and storage it for two-by-four. So now that we have to go by two-by-six, the builder's going to have to retrofit, then to fit, you know, a two-by-six, you know, construction.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions before we open this up for public hearing?
Yeah, Chub, I have a couple. I actually have a couple of concerns. First of all, was there an engineering report done on this by a structural engineer or we're just supposed to rely on the architect's word?
There was no structural engineer. It was, it was the builder, the building official and architect. You know, based on the condition of the framing, condition on the rot. You know, they all concluded that all of that needed to be essentially redone and rebuilt.
Standards. Well, that leads me to my next question. Sorry, I'll pop my video on. That leads me to my next question. When you purchased a property, did you have an inspection done?
No, we did not get an inspection.
Okay. Last. For several hundred years, two-by-fours have been used to build two-story houses. The only reason that you do a two-by-six is for insulation value, not for structure value. So, yeah, I'm pretty concerned about this entire, entire thing, Chub. It just not sitting well with me. I'd like to see, I'd like to see a P E have a look at it and literally issue a report. That's, that's all I have.
I mean, so the town building inspector has, you know, no sale and rot and inferior construction and our architect and the builders that that are doing this every day for a living and to try to build on a slanted wall. I mean, those are, those are.
Respectfully, sir, I've been in the business for thirty years, okay? And our building official in town absolutely knows what he's doing. But I would feel a lot better if we had a structural engineer with a P E license in the state of Connecticut, have a look at this and justify everything that both our building inspector, as well as your architect are saying.
Want to add anything? This is Rick and Don, who's our builders. Would you like to come up?
Yeah.
Could you state your name for the underspelling?
I'm gonna say it's Don Renato. R A N A U P N. So I'm sure everybody here saw the initial design when this went through for zoning approval first. And if you saw that, you would see that the existing walls on the first floor are eight foot tall, going to ten foot six for the living room and the kitchen. So in order to get that ten-foot-six height, we can't add two feet of wall on top of an eight-foot wall, or it's going to create a hinge situation, and it's not going to be strong. So we could build it with a two-by-four wall and go up, but it makes more sense to be structurally sound. I don't understand what the problem is because the two-by-six is going inward. It's not going out and obstructing any ground coverage or anything else. It just, that question doesn't make sense to me. So I just wanted to clarify that, that there's a reason for, we can't have hinge walls. You can't just add a two-foot-six inch wall on top of an eight-foot wall or with the weight, it's going to go like that, and now we got problems, bigger problems. So we could do.
I understand, I understand that completely, one hundred percent. However, the original plan show, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Why does it bother you if we're using a two-by-six wall that's going inside and not conflicting with any of the exterior dimensions? I don't understand.
Are you deviating from the original plans that were put forward for the variance?
Well, if we are deviating, we're deviating in the plus and make it more structurally sound. I just, if you initially looked at the plan, you would understand what I'm saying about that hinge wall being, we can't have a hinge wall, we gotta go full wall. So by going to a two-by-six wall inward, it's not interfering with anything that is ZBA, has anything to do with ZBA approval. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
I'm with you on that, but at the same time, why didn't we, why wasn't the two-by-six put forward in the original plans?
Because we just, when we, when we gutted the whole house, that's what we found.
Okay.
So we gutted the house. Naturally, when you got, when you do a remodel, you know, I'm sure you've seen this time and time again. I just got through with the remodel that we ended up having to gut the whole house because we found out the walls were only two-by-three and it was only one inch insulation. So I go forty-four homes in the town of Old Sablek and have a good track record. And we would never do anything that's incorrect or cheap out, so. Sorry, that was, it's just not interfering with anything outside.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions?
My only other concern was the letter from one of the adjacent property owners talking about dumpster being placed on the property without their permission or in front of the property. I don't know what the story is with that and what one of the applicants could address.
One hundred percent. So the applicant or the neighbor wants the dumpster twenty feet from her property. I can assure you, okay, it's in our driveway, probably four feet from, you know, putting it on her property fences. There's a fence, there's trees. I couldn't be on her property. So when, when, when the dump, when the dumpster truck pulled in, he inadvertently ran over a triangle that's like on a road, probably, you know, two feet in. You know, he said he would fix it, and then she immediately, like the next day, fixed it and quit fencing on there so that, so you wouldn't drive home. So it was, it was obviously an accident, you know, but he had the kind of deviate inward. But the dumpster definitely is not anywhere near her property. I mean, it's close to it within a few feet, but it's not, not her property level.
May I ask one question if you're all set with yours? My colleague's question. With respect to that letter, there were several things that were raised by the neighbor, so I'm curious what the timeframe is and if any of the other issues, not just the dumpster placement on a particular occasion or singular occasion have been addressed and how that has been improved, if at all.
It's hard to communicate with somebody that has no reasoning or rationale. Okay. I have instructed my builders and anybody involved to stay away from Mrs. Naples. She's irrational. We tried to make communication with her, try to make every situation better. But to try not to park a car, I mean, at that point in time, when the construction started, there were several vehicles at once. Okay, so going forward, there should be not as many vehicles on the street. We're going to try to park on the property to alleviate a lot of those concerns. Now, there was a lot going on between the foundation work, the contractors all there, so there was way too many people on site at one time. So going forward, there's not going to be as many people, so a lot of those situations are going to obviously be resolved. Now, as far as, you know, the property being, you know, the shambles, yes, I do agree with shambles. There was major, you know, you know, construction going on, disassembly of the home. And, you know, I've instructed the contractors to try to keep the property as clean as possible, you know, you know, basically during and after, you know, the construction, just to avoid, you know, any issues. I mean, listen, I'm going to be living there. I want to be friendly with the neighbors, but it's very hard when, when even from the very first ZBA hearing, she gave us issues to currently, and they extend forward. And now I've never said one, one word to Mrs. Naples, and I don't know why she is continuing to harass us and bring every, you know, problem forward. And a lot of those, you know, points on there, they're, they're just not factual. They just are not.
Okay, well, I appreciate the answer. I was just clarifying. So, you know, there's two sides to each story. And we're not here to, to, you know, go through those. Just wanted to hear the, the other side. I've read her entire letter, and it contained a lot. You touched on a couple of things that I mentioned, so I appreciate what you had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chub, are you going to address the letter that Sarah sent out by email today from Mr. Fisher?
I was going to deal with that when we got to anyone in the public who would like to speak for or against.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak for or against this application? If so, please raise your hand and come forward. I'm sorry, there's. Have to, but however you're comfortable, I'd ask you to speak up so that we can get your name and address.
So my name is Leanne Naples. I'm not irrational. Everything in that letter was true.
Can you just, what's the address though? I know you're the neighbor, but what's the number?
Twenty-one Sequest Road.
Okay, are there points that you would like to emphasize here?
Right, the dumpster is too close to my house. It cannot be that close because the debris was hitting my house. Piece of shit metal hit my window as I was sitting inside my house. That will not happen. As for the dumpster damaging my lawn, they damaged it twice. I gave them notice not to do it. Their general contractor said, well, he has every right to damage my property because I don't own it. But I do own it. Okay, it's my property. I've been for thirty years. It's my property. I don't want anybody damaging my property. The dumpster guy actually said that the homeowner said it was okay to damage my property. It is not okay. And I'd like to know why they didn't get a permit, why they didn't call the town when they decided to demolish the house. But what's the reason? Isn't there a penalty for doing that, not following what was approved here?
Stop work order is the consequence, and that's what was issued.
Right. There's no financial penalty?
Not that I know of, but that's not up to us. Let me explain what our role is here.
Okay.
The zoning Board of Appeals deals with property, not people. So, you know, we don't evaluate whether someone is good or bad, nice or nasty. We don't evaluate, except very generally, you know, whether a design is a good design or not, you know, matters of taste are up to individual people. Matters of being polite, being a good neighbor are up to individual people, not up to us. So the issue before us is is there a hardship? There's been no attempt to show a hardship. That's one ground for granting a variance. Or is there a reduction in nonconformity? When this matter was before us back in January, it was voted unanimously that there was a reduction in nonconformity that warranted granting a variance for this project. After that, as I understand the record and the case, the owner in doing a partial demolition that the original plan contemplated, found that the conditions were worse. Now, I'm not, I'm not here to judge whether that is a result of carelessness, a result of failure to have adequate foresight. So far as, I think so far as the law is concerned, that issue isn't before us.
Okay.
The issue before us is whether the plans now are the same plans that were approved back in January or, you know, the only difference is that, as I understand it, there is more demolition, but the reconstruction will be replicating the setbacks, the height limitation, the coverage, everything that was already approved.
But was a new survey done? But now they have, you know, an addition where the porch was. Has somebody gone there and measured it? I mean, they've already demolished the house that they weren't supposed to. What else have they done?
Well, I'm relying on the architectural plans that have been submitted on the record. If you have evidence that that's wrong, you know.
I don't have evidence that it's right. Do you have evidence that's correct?
We, we always rely on the architects and engineers' plans.
But has that, is that survey new though? The, you know, the plans, they're the old plans. I want to see a survey on the new, what's there today.
Well.
I see one revision date on the, on one of the maps, a July tenth date. That postdates the January. Now, on that map, it does show, there's quite a bit second floor reconstructed. It's got some things. You have to compare them both, though, and it's unfortunate, it doesn't include both in this, or I don't see that it does. And I'm looking at the existing roof, existing, all the existing versus new. So it's not, I didn't find it as readily apparent when I looked at the application. To be quite frank.
Yeah, to Laurie's point, it's nothing's bubbled, nothing shaded that was changed.
So can we have something that's more up to date?
It's all, all the materials submitted are actually posted online under a zoning Board of Appeals. So everything that was, all of the materials submitted, the new and the old ones are submitted and on the zoning Board of Appeals website. So all of information is there?
I think the comment is that the neighbor would like to have a survey ordered.
That's right.
I don't, I don't know that that's anything that we need to, or can.
The changes that are highlighted are showing where the additional reconstruction needed to occur.
Right.
But none of the lines have changed.
None of the lines have changed.
So now, you know, basically the garage is there and then the porch has a basement and everything. But doesn't that make null and void what the zoning meeting was like in January, what was approved? Because now the house is different, right? There's a garage there. Is it in compliance? Is everything in compliance? If you're building a new house, don't you have to meet certain rules and regulations that are today's standards without a variance?
They are here for a variance to get what they already got approved back in January.
But shouldn't that be null and void? Sorry to interrupt, but shouldn't that be null and void since they demolished the house without any permits? Or, or, you know, approval to do that?
Was that why they're here?
Are you saying the house was fully demolished?
Just the basement remains and the garage.
The entire structure was removed.
All the living space and a big porch in the back.
Was that total demolition of the entire building?
Well, the basement is there.
And the building was totally removed, you're saying?
It's pretty much gone.
Pretty much is not totally removed. It's maybe not considered a demolition. This may be considered that they found problems and they're trying to correct those problems. And we don't have, we don't have demolition authority in this committee. All we have the ability to do is look at what was presented in January and approved and what's presented tonight, and does that differ from the approval in January?
Well, I'm not buying that the house was damaged, it had rot. That house was immaculate. I lived there for thirty years next door to that neighbor, and they kept it immaculate. Any, any difference that they might have seen, any, you know, things rotten, that's just typical. That's typical for a house that was built, like in the fifties or sixties. It was built in the early sixties. So I'm not buying it. I think that they had it in their mind. What, that the house was?
That the house, that it was not rot, that it was nothing did require this? Where are the proof? You're making a number of statements, ma'am.
But so aren't they?
With no proof.
But so aren't they, aren't they?
With architectural back end.
Right, but they, but they demolished the house what they weren't supposed to.
They didn't demolish the house. You keep saying they demolished the house. I specifically said to you, was the entire structure removed? And you said, pretty much. They did not demolish the house.
They had demolished the basement, but when you demolish a house, do you take out the foundation? Is that what demolished it?
And was there structure left on top of the basement?
They rebuilt a lot of that, right?
Was there a structure left on top of the basement?
On top of the basement?
Yes. Was there a structure left?
No.
So you're saying.
It's a split-level house.
You're saying that the entire thing was demolished to the basement.
The, the basement was above ground.
I lived in a raised ranch.
It's not a raised ranch, it's a split.
Well, I live in something where my foundation is exactly down there.
Right.
All right, so if you're telling me that the entire thing was demolished, then that's a statement you're making. Where is that place? You don't have, you have an opinion.
Marty, Marty. Marty, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you look at Chris's letter, she confirms that the first floor area was confirmed to be removed in its entirety, which deviates from the original plans.
It does deviate, it certainly does deviate, you know? That's.
And that's what we're here to look at.
That's correct.
Does this plan that they're submitting tonight deviate from what we approved in January?
And if I could just layer on to that with your permission, Mr. Chairman. It's, it's not only, okay, are these plans different? That's part of it, sure. As the chairman very accurately summarized, my understanding as well of what has transpired, we had the January approval based on those plans which did not call for the first floor to be removed. During the construction, after approval, they at least purported to claim that in demolishing the second floor, they uncovered rot, which also with the, the building officials' input, required that the whole first floor be taken down. So now here we are. A cease and desist order was sent to stop work because of that deviation. Understanding that Mr. Makawiki did weigh in and say that the building code requires from a structural standpoint that these bottom walls be taken down, that does not supersede or trump ZBA's role in that if a variance or some deviations from what the zoning regulations require for the construction of the house, if that's needed, the ZBA still has to consider that. So fast forward to today, we have a different situation on the ground where the property has been taken down to the basement. So my understanding of the reason that the stop-work order was sent out was, okay, we're now at ground level, I get the basement's over ground level, but I'll just say it that way. We're now at ground level. The question for the ZBA because their Janu- your January approval doesn't apply anymore. Um, that is why they are back here to receive approval to build what they're saying is the same as what was proposed in January, but effectively rebuilding that first floor the same way before it was knocked down. The legal question for this board now, though, is the same question that is this board always faces when there's a variance application. A, is there BD, is there resulting? I'm sorry?
We're having a hard time. Start over again.
You have to start from the beginning from the reason, because you cut out your.
Okay.
Start.
So.
The question before us now is.
Okay, so the question before you now is, and just jump in if I cut out again, is is there a hardship or is there a reduction in nonconformity that warrants the ZBA approving this iteration of the plan? I recognize that it's the same as what was approved back in January, but what was approved back in January was based on the ZBA's understanding that that first floor was not going to come down. So now that the first floor has come down, I think the question for the board to consider is, is there some different design that further brings this property into a more conforming status than it would have been in January, just building off of the pre-existing first floor? Is there a way to tweak that first floor now to overall have a more conforming property? I I I think that's the question. Is there a hardship that gets them there? Or is there an overall reduction that outweighs any other um, nonconformities that would be granted by variance?
And to that point, if I can add, with respect to the plans that were submitted back in January and then the one that's revised as of July tenth, I would prefer to see on one map all of it overlaid, so because there are differences, just visually looking at it without reading anything on the map, you know there are changes. I would like to see something that's a little more specific about why the changes are there. Perhaps the cause, if it had to do with some kind of structural damage. Um, because to me, the plans are different enough that make me feel it's not the same application, it's not the same issues that they're coming in for, or may not have the same effect. But it's impossible to determine that based on what, i- in my opinion, what has been presented thus far. So that's, that's what I'd like to see. And then I'd be in a better position to be able to make an an ed- educated um, decision.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak for or against? Please come forward and identify yourself.
I'm Nick Ficaro. I am the architect. Uh, my address is one fifty Barbara Road in Middletown. But but Kate, she's. Ficaro, F I C A R O. I knew the architect, yes. Um, so I just want to clarify that I'm not exactly sure what changes you're seeing beyond uh the fact that we're reconstructing the damaged walls. Um, it's, you know, it's literally the same plan, the same footprint, the same numbers, the same heights. The only thing is the handwriting on the original plan that says reconstructed walls. Um, and to uh, the neighbor's letter, I read through everything earlier. I triple checked all the numbers. All the numbers are correct. And I'm sure you all know that based on, uh, you know, what needs to be.
When you, when you refer to the plans, you're referring to the plans dated July ten, twenty twenty five?
The plans delayed, uh, dated July tenth versus the January plan, that they are the same print. The only difference is that uh, the lawyer has handwritten not of where, where the walls were reconstructed. And I will say, as a semantics issue, when I, I did expect that front wall to stay, um, thinking they would just sister the choice. Uh, but then there was so little left that they said, why not bring it up to code anyway? And again, you know, the the size is the same, the setbacks are the same, you know, they're bringing it in, not as as far as footprint is concerned. Uh, we do still have the reduction in the nonconformity that we had originally when we were granted the variance. Um, and that section that was demolished, none of that is is encouraging on the setbacks. All of that is within the buildable area according to uh, zoning. So.
I would ask you to do me a favor.
Of course.
One of these drawings is not dated. Would you please state that for us? The revision date.
Very similar.
See, all.
Oh, I see, because he hand wrote on that and he didn't write, yes, of course.
The others are all, it's just that last.
Got it. So, so in terms of what was?
If if perhaps I'm referring to changes, it could be, I'm looking at some that are clear with respect to the Ju- July tenth. And I'm looking online back because I did not bring the package with me that had the January, uh, the plans that were submitted for the January meeting. Um, so it does look like there are additional markups on this July tenth, um, which is what precipitated my question, and it's impossible to read the actual um, footage. So if my colleagues are are seeing it more clearly and have no issue with it, I'm I'm certainly comfortable um, taking their word for it if that's, if that's in fact the case.
Yeah, I I don't have it right in front of me, but um, it it is literally the same plan that I submitted in January. I was on vacation when they had to resubmit the application, so the lawyer just hand wrote the changes on it.
Yeah.
Okay, some some markups are not showing on on the January map for me. Um, so that just, that's probably the issue then.
The original drawings were dated eleven twenty one twenty four. And uh, they have been uh, handwritten where uh, new construction is being proposed. But architecturally, uh, spatially, everything is the same as as the November drawings that were approved by us in January. As I understand.
Yes.
The record here. Thanks.
Could you explain the sunroom? Uh, on the last sheet, it says existing fully enclosed sunroom beyond to be converted to is crossed out as a reconstructed kitchen. Is it going to be a kitchen still?
It is going to be a kitchen still, um.
Okay.
My, my.
That's all I wanted to know. Wasn't sure if I'm like. The way it was worded. That's no change.
Any more questions for me?
No, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak for or against? Ma'am, come forward and give us your name and address.
Joseph and Teresa, Leaderer, L E D E R E R, twenty two Maplewood Road, Old Staver. But first, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to board members who serve our community. We appreciate the work that, we appreciate the work that this committee does on behalf of our community. Thank you. We're here in support of the applicants, um, and also the builder. Uh, we appreciate that you already approved these plans and hope that you will consider that how difficult it has been on these folks waiting again for an additional approval, uh, due to the uh, complaints of a single community member. We've known the applicants for over ten years as wonderful people who have kept up their property in the other area of Old Staver and appreciate that they're moving to Knollwood now. Um, and will again make improvements to the Knollwood neighborhood. As far as the builder is concerned, Don Renato, we have nothing but outstanding uh, feelings about him and his work. He's built two homes for us. He has meticulous attention to detail and we trust him implicitly. I'm sure you all have seen his work and known his experience, so uh, what he tells you needs to be done, uh, needs to be done. Or.
Yeah, they did, but add to that. I would add that, uh, as Teresa already pointed out, we us, we also have worked with Don Renato in the past. We've known Gino and Karen for quite a few years. Um, we had a similar situation where we had to tear down an existing property uh, and have a new home built. And we recognize the disruption that is caused to neighbors as that construction process uh, carries on. Uh, but we, we always appreciated that our neighbors were understanding. And ever since I've lived through that, I've tried to always be patient with anybody in our neighborhood who is doing development and improvement on their property, recognizing that at the end of the construction, it gives a benefit to the entire community, this kind of work continues. Uh, so I get, we we both uh, speak on behalf of the applicant. We also understand the cost of these types of delays. Uh, a lot of costs that are hidden in delay, no matter how small it is, and we support the the, their application. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the live audience wishing to speak for or against the application?
But where do those people live? Do they even live in our neighborhood?
I'm sorry, miss.
So the 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 gentleman and the woman who just spoke, do they even live in our neighborhood?
You're gonna have to come forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, we live two or three streets away.
Right, they don't, they don't live in our middle area. They're not impacted.
They live in North.
Do you hear anything?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I couldn't hear a word.
She she was concerned where the, um, people that just spoke live. Are they close to the, the property or farther away? And they stated it was a few streets away.
There were no word.
Anyone else? Is there anyone in the virtual audience who would like to uh, speak for or against the application? If so, raise your hand virtually. Do we have anyone?
Lori, if she wants to speak.
Okay.
Apologize, no, no. It's looking at participant list and I hit the wrong one because I didn't put my glasses on first. My apologies.
Okay, uh, I invite a motion to uh, close the hearing.
We move to close the hearing. Second.
Second. All in favor of closing the hearing and proceeding to uh, discussion by the commission? Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? All right, I invite a motion either to approve or disapprove.
I'll make a motion to approve the application, uh, twenty four slash twenty five dash sixteen C, you know, parent G M Minoni.
It's a twenty five, twenty six. You said twenty four, twenty five.
Oops.
That was.
Oh, that's the old one.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Looking the wrong, wrong agenda.
Deering.
I think I'm bad again. It's August thirteen, yes, sorry, twenty five, twenty six dash five C. And uh, based on the fact that the the lines of the uh, drawings have not changed, the only changes are related to uh, additional demolition that was required to make the structure sound. And let's see, I, I can't think of anything else beyond that. There's no, to me, there's no change in the uh, book back in January.
As I understand it, you're suggesting that the conditions that warranted the variance in January still apply here in August?
Yes.
And that they are sufficient grounds in your view to grant the variance? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, I will uh, add my two cents, um. As someone who was myself born down a house that I expected to remodel and uh, modified a couple of other houses and discovered unforeseen difficulties, uh, I empathize with the owners. I think that uh, the fact that they are building on the same foundation and I drove by and I think there's even a partial wall that's still standing and is that, is that being in incorporated? I believe so, according to the drawings. So I think that there is uh, no, no real change in circumstance other than uh, making the structure sounder, safer. And uh, just as livable as we approved back in January. Any other discussion? All right, um, hearing done, let's have a uh, roll call vote. Uh, I don't, let's see if we need a roll call. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, raising raising your hand if you're virtual. Any opposed?
Done.
Okay. So the vote is three to two, uh, the motion fails.
John and Lori are the, uh, not in favor, opposed?
No, I I I am, I am, if it's subject to everything being the absolute same as the January pre-approved variance application, I'm okay with it, as long as that's the language. I thought that was what was going to be placed in the the motion. So if it's identical in terms of the structure, we proved it then, we prove it now. Um, I will approve.
Do you want to add that into the motion now because?
Okay, I must have misunderstood because I thought one of, I thought my colleague had had said that and then chub added that. Can we read the motion as it's going to be approved or disapproved then? So that's, I'm I'm clearer. I would appreciate that.
Let me just, let me just say, Lori, that that, I don't know if you have the the big, can you see what I'm holding up here, the big drawings that are before us?
Current plan, the July is much clearer for me because I obtained the others online via the uh, website. So the previous plan is what I don't have a clear copy of to be able to look at, and that was my reason for asking those questions. It was unclear. Some, some uh, pathways or uh, lines were not even showing on the, it's the November map, but it was used for the January um, application. So those aren't even coming up as showing on the map when I'm looking at it. That's why it looked like even more changes were were occurring. And I couldn't, you know, intelligently compare the two and be comfortable knowing it's the same same structure, everything's the same, you know, width, length, height, all of that. So that was my concern.
I I think the the record before us is that these plans are the November plans that have been marked up with handwritten uh, indications of what is going to be reconstructed uh, instead of, of what was originally going to be over an existing floor. And the only difference, the only other difference, as I understand it, based on the testimony of the architect and the testimony of the builder, is that instead of two by fours in the exterior walls, they're going to be two by sixes, but the additional two inches is going inward, not outward. So all of the exterior dimensions remain exactly as they were in the November plan.
Understood, thank you.
So is that a a yes vote or a no vote?
Then I I will vote yes.
And was there a no vote, John?
I'm a now.
Okay, so it's four to one, the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I invite a motion to approve the uh, minutes of our uh, July nine meeting as submitted.
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Oh, I should ask, any corrections or additions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh, there are no, uh, there's no correspondence or announcements? Oh, we didn't do the cam.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Uh, wasn't there a cam on?
Yes, there's a, yeah.
You can make a new motion for that.
I invite a motion to approve the cam on uh, twenty five, twenty six dash, what was it, five C?
Five C, so.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just me.
Okay. Okay, uh, there are no committee or staff reports. I invite a motion to adjourn. Okay, uh, there are no committee or staff reports. I invite a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night, guys.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.